Two and one. Good evening and welcome to our City of Canby Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting for January the eighth. Call to orders, please join us for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first order of business. It is the end, it's that time of the year where we select our planning commission chairperson. I will say I'm happy to stay on as chairperson, I'm also happy to not stay on as chairperson. So with that in mind, do we have a nomination for a chairperson? Mr. Hutchinson?
I nominate Matt Ellison for chair.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you both. All right, and Dawn has stated that we need to do a roll call vote, so we'll start with Ms. Driscoll.
Hi.
Mr. Willing?
Aye.
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 And Mr. Roche?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, the ayes have it, seven zip, I'm back in.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. First consent item, we have-
Vice Chair.
Oh, thank you so much. So we also have to do the same process for the vice chair. Which is currently, Commissioner Ewart, do we have a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate to keep Dan in that position, Danny Ward.
Very good, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, roll call vote, we'll start with Commissioner Driscoll.
Aye.
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 Clean sweep again. Congratulations, Mr. Ewart, you're staying on as my vice chair, outstanding, great job team. Here we go, on to consent items, we have the draft meeting minutes for August 22nd, 2022, I'm gonna turn it over to Dawn, he's got some revision to discuss before we move to adopt that.
Thank you Chair Ellison, on page, excuse me, on page four of the August 22nd, the August 22nd, 2022 minutes, number seven should read, Chair Patton shared that the revision made to the Heritage Landmark Commission by laws were approved, and then it goes on to say however council did not accept the change to allow more than three, should be added here, more than three members to reside outside the city limits to join the Heritage Landmarks Commission. So the ad here is more, council did not accept the change to allow more than three members was added to reside outside the city limits. And that's the only change on those minutes.
Very well. Okay, do we have a motion then to adopt these meeting minutes with the revision as stated previously?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the draft meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2022, as submitted with the changes that planning director submitted tonight.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All right, and we have quorum, we have Mr. Ewart, Mr. Hutchinson, Ms. Jeroche and myself to pass these meeting minutes, should we choose to, so we'll start with Commissioner Jeroche. You approve?
I approve.
So do I.
Aye.
Aye.
Very well, meeting minutes are adopted four zero. Next up on our agenda, we have a, let's see here, where do they go, we have final findings for sub 23-01 Dunet subdivision. So on, so Dawn, on that one I had a question, so, and it's just I'm a little rusty on this one, everybody did the verbal approval before, I have a signature page that I need to sign, but do we need to do another round of approvals again verbally? Because this one says written.
Yes, for the final findings, yes, and then we'll memorialize those and then you will sign those.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're adopting the findings from that last hearing.
Okay, so do we have a motion then to adopt the Dunet subdivision?
I move we accept the draft final findings on the sub 23-01 Dunet subdivision.
And a second?
A second it.
Very well, we will roll call vote, let's start with Commissioner Jeroche.
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
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 All right, so that is, the ayes have it, seven zip, and we will adopt the final findings sub 23-01 Dunet subdivision as written. All right, next up, citizen input on non-agenda items, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on non-agenda items, each person will be given three minutes to speak, staff and planning commission will make every effort to respond to the questions raised during the citizens' input before the meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. I'm told we do have one individual, I'm sorry, or two individuals, John and Judy Kazmar, that would like to discuss solar shading, do we have them available or on Zoom? There they are, hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, let me tell you, okay, my name's John Kazmar, my wife Judy, we, I'm here to urge the City of Canby to adopt rules or regulations that would restrict neighbors in the building of structures or planting vegetation such as trees that would shade or hinder sunlight from an established solar system. My wife and I bought a lot in phase two of the Northwoods Estates area in Canby in 2015, we custom built our house, positioned it to take advantage of a south facing, south rear facing roofline for the express purpose of installing a roof mounted solar system. Our house was the first built on the block, after about two years, a builder placed a house behind us, planted trees about 18 inches from the fence separating our yards, which were birch and cedars. We were concerned about the closeness to the fence and the type of trees and indicated to the builder a day after they installed it in an attempt to get him to move it further from the fence, he disregarded our concerns. According to an arborist, the height for the cedars alone will grow up to 100 feet tall, as you can imagine, these trees which are already 35 feet tall are spaced close enough together to block all light and they partially shade our roof during the winter and will completely shade our roof mounted solar array in a very short time. During my research on this issue, I found that Clackamas County's municipal code 2019.01 was a protective permit for solar panels which prohibits shade caused by vegetation and adjacent land structures, but evidently it does not have jurisdiction over Canby. According to division zoning here in Canby, there are height limitations on fencing and even on an arbor to not exceed eight feet high and a setback of five feet from the property line, if the vegetation becomes too full or too high, the owner would be responsible for maintaining it. My question is, are there any regulations that have been adopted by the Canby Planning Commission to protect the shading of a solar system? And if there are no protections at this time, I would like to request the planning commission to consider adopting such. If these protections were in place, it would encourage the use of renewable energy citywide. Thank you.
Thank you both very much, appreciate your comments, I'm gonna turn it over to Dawn to answer some of that, because I've only been on planning commission for a year, I haven't heard anything that's come across in that time.
And thank you for your commentary, John and Judy, I won't go into a deep dive of the history, we have a packed room here tonight of people waiting to testify, I think, on the next hearing, but did want to say that, well, we will dive into this further, I can give you a short answer here, which is in 2012, there was a revoke, revoking of the solar ordinance in Canby. The details of why that was revoked, I can dig into that further, but that was like 11 years ago, there, so, and I think that some of these issues relate to some of the complexities around solar provisions and easements for solar, those kinds of things. This is something that I'd like to dive in further and figure out a little bit more about the details of why that was removed from the code and to get you a better answer on what that is. Some of these are fairly complicated issues, however, in terms of solar provisions and easements on adjacent properties, so just to be honest and transparent with you, this is fairly complex, it gets fairly complex fairly easily, I do know that many jurisdictions also revoke their solar provision ordinances as well that they adopted previously, so I would like to follow back up and what I'd like to do is get a little bit more information on this and even query Department of Land Conservation and Development and get their thoughts on this as well. Some of the balancing acts we have to deal with here are housing affordability and those other elements, obviously you're trying to do something good for, you know, alternative energy sources, so there's a balancing act here between those two, but if I could report back at the next planning commission on this, that would give us more time to kind of dive into this and understand what this is. Ultimately, if this is something that the council wanted to pursue and bring forward, that would be something at their directive to do so, but I do know these are, it's not, typically it's just not the vegetation on a solar ordinance, you're dealing with orientation, you're dealing with solar access, and you're dealing with how a plat, a layout of a plat is actually constructed, so they get fairly involved in that process, but I'd be happy to report back to you individually in the next planning commission meeting, which is going to be on the 20, yeah, June 22nd, give some more information on this. I understand your concern and your, the adjacency, obviously you didn't put the solar panels in there to have them blocked, at this point I don't have a great answer for you other than we don't have any regulatory authority over this, I'm not sure if we put an ordinance in, if we could change the goalposts and, you know, on your neighbor as well either, so, meaning that retroactively changing the standard, I think you're, this is something we'll dive into further though, but that's probably the best answer I can give you at this point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you both very much for your comment. We'll move on to new business, there are, there is none. Now we'll get over to our public hearings portion of the meeting, this is a legislative public hearing format, tonight there is a matter before the hearing body that requires a public hearing, all interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matters. If you wish to testify on these matters, please fill out a public testimony card and give it to the recording secretary. When your name is called, please step forward to the microphone at the front of the, at the front of the table, state your name, address, and interest in the matter. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In doing so, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. All questions must be directed through the chair, that's myself, any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. The public hearing will be conducted as follows, staff will have five minutes to present the questions, if any, by the hearing body or staff following that. The chair will open the public hearing for testimony, applicant will have 20 minutes to present, proponents three minutes, opponents three minutes, and then rebuttal period for 10 minutes. Chair will close the public hearing, take questions, if any, by the hearing body, and then discussion by the hearing body. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing on each matter or it will be continued to a date certain in the future, this will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the public hearings? Seeing none, we will go ahead and turn it over to our associate planner, Emma Poricolo, to present on Clackamas County Fairgrounds multi-purpose building, DR 23-03/CP 23-01.
Thank you Commissioner. Good evening all, tonight we are here to discuss the Clackamas County Fairgrounds multi-purpose building that is subject to a design review application and a conditional use permit. To orient you to the project site, we are looking at the Clackamas County Fairgrounds, which I'm sure most of you are familiar, where it's located, it's at 694 Northeast Forest Avenue. What is proposed is a 44,000 square foot multi-purpose building, and as I mentioned, it is subject to a design review as it is a new building, which triggers a design review, and it is subject to a conditional use permit, we have considered the use of major public facility as it is owned and operated by Clackamas County and as Clackamas County is a public entity that qualifies as a major public facility, thus triggering the conditional use permit. Here is a general overview of the project, let me see if I can get this to work, in the, in the middle of this large tax lot here, that, for the purposes of the applications I've labeled as the primary lot, is where the proposed building is located amongst the existing fairgrounds. What I've called the campus for this application, the campus is referring to all the tax lots that comprise the fairgrounds, which are all outlined here in black. So you have the primary tax lot here, you have several accessory tax lots for parking, so down here across Northeast Fourth, and some accesses, as well as some up here to the north. This tax lot here is also included in the application because a rain garden, a new rain garden is proposed up here, and so those are here and referred to as the subject properties. The site is zoned R1 low-density residential, as, the last time I was here was the Public Works Facility, as you know, many of the city's facilities that are public or pseudo-public facilities are zoned R1, and we don't really have a better zoning for that, so the site is zoned R1 surrounded by R1 and R2 residential zoning, as well as an industrial pocket in the kind of southeast corner and across Northeast Fourth, that is zoned M1 light industrial. So the existing conditions of the site, the fairgrounds is an existing site currently operating, but it's been at the current location since 1909, it is used for a variety of events throughout the year, from, you know, small meetings to larger events such as the Clackamas County Fair. Currently there are seven, seven buildings at the site that are used as event spaces. Previously there was a livestock barn on the site that was demolished in 2019, 2014, excuse me, and as you can see on this map here, that shows the existing conditions, it was generally located in this area, which there are now temporary tents that have been used in place of the livestock barn, and I'll get into that importance of that barn in a minute. So the application scope, so this application is a new building within a site that has been located there for over 100 years now, it is a pre, so the site is considered a pre-existing legal non-conforming use of the fairgrounds, given its date, it predates most or all city policies. It has never received a full comprehensive look from a land use permitting perspective, so that we believe that most of the site is pre-existing non-conforming. This application itself is for a new building, and so this application is focusing on the impact and the new building as itself, with the acknowledgement that it works into the other pieces of the site that are considered legal non-conforming. So the proposed project is a 44,069 square foot building, the building is to be used for various uses, hence the name multi-purpose building, it is to be used as livestock barn and assembly space, a vendor display area, a show arena, and potentially a gathering space in the case of a couch trauma event. The building will replace many functions of the former livestock barn that was previously demolished, and will be located generally in the same location. And so this slide here gives you a little bit of a comparison of the livestock barn that was previously there, was 48,000 square feet and had a maximum occupancy of approximately 3,000, there has been temporary tents in place since that barn was demolished that have functioned essentially in the same way as the livestock barn and met similar capacity. The new building will be 44,000 square feet with 31 square, 31,000 square feet of event space, a maximum, maximum occupancy is estimated to be 2,695, however, the applicant has stated that they expect that their maximum, excuse me, maximum occupancy for the building will be a little bit lower for events closer to 2,000, that they will fit, the amount of people that they would fit in the building. The building will have full heating and cooling abilities, it will not operate at full capacity during the fair, so, you know, it will operate the same way that the livestock barn fairly has operated during the fair, and staff's concern was if there is a full, what does the impact look like if you operate this building at full capacity when the site is operating at full capacity? And so we have, we worked through that with the applicant to get a better understanding of that. The applicant, the fairgrounds does estimate approximately five new concerts with attendance capping around 2,000 will happen each year with this new building. These are some of the plans proposed for the building, this is just as a close-up of the area of impact and the new development that's proposed, there's some asphalt surrounding the building, some landscaping areas, new ADA parking, and some lighting around the building. This is the floor plan of the building showing the multi-purpose area, there will also be small office spaces, as well as storage and restrooms. This image here is the elevation showing the building design. As you can see, there's some exterior mechanical equipment that's proposed, so here on the west elevation, there's fairly tall exterior HVAC equipment proposed, as well as some exterior mechanical equipment up here. This is more showing kind of color and materials that are proposed for the building. These are the applicable criteria for the application, off-street parking, the zoning requirements for the R1 zone, signage, lighting, site design review, the CUP application, general standards and procedures, as well as application procedures. So first I'd like to start off with reviewing the consistency with conditional use permit criteria. The first criteria is that it complies with the comp plan and the development code, as demonstrated in the staff report, the proposal complies with the development code, it also is supported by comp plan policies, this is a big economic asset to the community, which is a comp plan policy. An EOA policy, which is in turn part of the comp plan, is to support agritourism, which this proposal would do. The second criteria is that the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposal, given the historic use of the site, that this is consistent with the historic use of the site, we believe it is consistent, as well as it is in a favorable location on the site, it is not, you know, up against the property line that's adjacent to the single-family homes or the residential properties, excuse me, it is, you know, somewhat more in the site away from these property lines. Public facilities and services can be adequately serviced, the site as an existing operating site is already serviced by most or all utilities, and where upgrades are required, those will be approved and reviewed by said provider. The last criteria is that the proposal will not substantially alter the character of surrounding areas, and so for this criteria, I focused on several areas of impact that I saw with the proposal, the first one being building usage, again, as I previously mentioned, you know, the building will be fairly consistent with the existing use and function of the site, the building is not going to be used to its maximum capacity being, there being a 2,000-person event every single day, or, you know, to maximum frequency, frequency, it will be consistent with what has been going on. The design of the building, the coloring of the building is similar to what you see on the site already, and the metal exterior is similar to the structures in the industrial area to the southeast, although not consistent with the residential properties neighboring the site, those properties are well-screened with mature landscaping on the site to the north and the east property lines, the exterior, exterior mechanical equipment that I pointed out earlier is also screened by that landscaping as well. Noise, the mechanical equipment was a concern for noise for Dawn and I, and we were concerned that that would be a frequent noise impact, and so we had the applicant evaluate that, and they determined that the equipment will not exceed the maximum noise permitted at the property lines, and that meets, that meets the noise code. And then events at the fairgrounds are exempt from the noise code. And then on the next slide, I will get into parking and traffic. So we had the applicant complete both a traffic and parking study, in which they evaluated the conditions during a 2023 multi-day concert. For context here, you know, this is a very unique site and unique use that has not been looked at before comprehensively, as I mentioned, so there is, you know, no parking standard in our code for this type of use specifically, is also for, in terms of traffic, there is no ITE code specifically for this type of use, so we kind of had to evaluate what was there and what was happening on the ground to understand, is this being met, you know, do we see a need to increase traffic, or sorry, excuse me, increase the amount of parking in order to accommodate this proposal? And so the applicant's evaluation took a look and monitored both traffic and parking during this event, and they determined that there would be no increase of traffic generation during peak hours, and that it was, the existing street system is sufficient to accommodate the proposed building, they also determined that existing parking was sufficient to accommodate the attendees, the parking was not fully used during the event, there was an abundance of extra parking during these events. They also monitored on-street parking, since this was monitored for just one event, it's hard to know what is regular parking in the neighborhood versus event parking, but as the applicant noted, likely there will always be people using some variation of street parking to avoid paying the fee for parking. So based on the findings of those two studies, no transportation mitigation or additional parking are required for this application. The last piece of the CUP is that the applicant is requesting an eight-foot-tall fence around the mechanical equipment on the north and west elevation. Rather than as a variance, we believe this falls under the CUP standards, the CUP chapter says that planning commission may impose conditions which it finds necessary to avoid a detrimental impact and otherwise protect the best interests of the surrounding area or community as a whole, and then it has a list of various conditions, and one of those is designating the size, height, and location of materials of a fence. And so to give you a proxy for what is being requested, in a regular residential zone, your maximum fence height permitted is six feet, they're requesting eight feet tall, there is both safety and screening benefits to this additional fencing that is being requested. Staff supports the applicant request and recommend PC approve the adjusted eight-foot minimum height specifically for the exterior mechanical equipment of the new multi-purpose building, and I specifically say that, since this is a very large site, you know, we kind of want to make sure that we have a pointed exemption and not say that this is, you know, broadly applicable, but applicable to the specific area. applicable, but applicable to this specific area. So there's also the design review application. The criteria for the design review application are consistency with the design matrix, the proposal meets the design matrix, and the number of LID or low-impact development points required. What is not mentioned in the staff report that did not get included is that the building materials, there was zero two points given for the metal building, but there is actually a four-foot CMU base around the building. So although that does not add additional points, that was not included in the application. That is something to note. The other is compatibility with the vicinity. I touched on this a lot in this UP criteria, but the color is similar to the buildings on the site. The metal structures are compatible with the buildings in the industrial area that is neighboring and the residential areas are well screened. The landscaping, meaning the landscaping requirements for the site, the site already greatly exceeds our minimum landscaping requirements, and new landscaping is being added. Street light, or sorry, lighting, no new street lighting is required, and new lighting on the site will meet the LZ2 standard, which is typically required, or is not typical of residential areas, but given the use, we saw that as fitting for this site or for this. Last, we have a couple of tweaks to our conditions of approval that I wanted to propose and recommend to planning commission to adopt. You can see here on COA number two. This is a, we have requested that there be a monitoring parking study done after the building is built. And so this is just some language tweaking that requirement basically rather than at a maximum event, be during a full occupancy of the new building. COA number three, there is one tree that was identified to be removed, and this is just cleaning up and making sure it's clear that that tree is not lumped into this CUP and that it is exempt because the applicant has already identified that tree is to be removed. And the last one, there are still some discussions with, you know, the next steps are the utility and service providers review the future iterations of the plan. And so it's still, those plans are still being figured out. And so this COA is to give a little bit more leeway and, or leeway sounds like a word, openness to approve alternative approaches, which can be fire ultimately has the final say of. And so we've just added in installing the water line to the property or otherwise obtain approval from Canby Fire Department. So based on all this, the staff's recommendation is to approve the application. DR 2303 and CUP 2301, subject to the identified revised conditions of approval. So subject to the revisions that I have. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Emma. At this time, do we have a spokesperson for the applicant that would like to come and speak?
Good evening. My name's Heather Austin. I'm with Three J Consulting. We're representing the fairgrounds this evening. Our address is 9600 Southwest Nimbus Avenue, Suite 100, Beaverton, Oregon 97008. I'd like to thank staff for their thorough staff report as well as the presentation this evening. And of course, thank you, the planning commissioners for giving your time this evening. That's a really important contribution you're making to your city. The presentation tonight will outline, as staffs did, the proposal for the new multipurpose building at the Clackamas County Fairgrounds and Event Center. And afterward, we'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm accompanied by a great team this evening. We have Phil Worth from Kittleson and Associates, who actually will join me in a moment to talk about traffic and parking in a little more detail. Erin Murphy from Three J, Brian Crowe from the Clackamas County Events, Brian Dolchen from LRS Architects, and Stephen Blommer with Clackamas County Facilities. And I believe we have a couple of folks on the Zoom call as well, Laura Oxen with Three J and Steve Mylum with LRS Architects. So a big team to answer all of your questions. Next slide, please. So this, I love this slide. I love these pictures. The fairgrounds have been a significant part of this community for over a hundred years. In 1907, the Fairgrounds and Event Center was established, and in 1909, the main property was purchased by the county. The first permanent buildings were built over a hundred years ago in 1924, or right about a hundred years ago, when the old livestock barn was built on the site. As Emma mentioned, heavy snow fell on the roof of the old livestock barn and created structural issues, resulting in the barn being decommissioned in 2014. In 2018, a master plan for the site was completed, and many of the participants in that process emphasized the importance of a balance between preservation of the historic traditions on the site and the need for the modernization of some of the aging facilities. Next slide, please. With the old livestock building in mind and the recent memory of the 2018 and 2020 summer fires that caused animals and fowl from the surrounding community to evacuate to the fairgrounds, the fairgrounds was awarded a grant to help with project cost to construct a new, modern building that will serve the community for decades to come. The fair board hopes that this new building will do everything that the livestock building was able to do and more, and it will create a space that the Canby community and Clackamas County community at large will be proud and excited to call their own. Proposed in the same location as the previous livestock barn, we hope that the building will be a welcome new chapter to the fairgrounds' ongoing story. Next slide, please. And Emma mentioned the site, and I know you're all familiar with it. It's such a large site in town, but it is on northeast Fourth Avenue to the south between Pine Street and Locust Street on the east and west and Tenth Street to the north. Next slide, please. This is our aerial view of the location where the new building is shown, sort of in the middle, a little up to the upper right. It gives a good idea of the scale of the building to the rest of the site. The old livestock barn was just over forty-eight thousand square feet with a maximum occupant load of about three thousand sixty-five persons. The new multipurpose building will be a little bit smaller at about forty-four hundred, forty-four thousand square feet with a maximum occupancy, as Emma noted, of two thousand six hundred ninety-five. But then, of course, the lower occupancy, and we'll talk about that in a moment, too. Next slide, please. The fairground site, which I believe was called a campus, is about sixty-nine acres in total size. And as we can see on the site plan, the new building will be located exactly where the livestock barn was. The building is fairly centrally located, taking up space where pop-up tents have been placed in recent fair years. Next slide, please. As mentioned, also part of the campus are some additional parking and storage areas. These tax lots are shown in blue and red at the bottom of the site as well as uncolored into the north and to the east. The closest property line to the north of the new building is about three hundred feet. So the residences to the north have about a three hundred foot spacing. The building will be about four hundred and fifty feet to the east and south property lines. To the west, we're about a quarter mile away from the nearest adjacent property. For other events outside of the annual fair and rodeo that the new building will host, people will enter the site probably like usual by the blue and red parking lots with the addition of that small amount of street parking mentioned by staff and enter through the main gates of the site. I'll, I'll hand it over to Phil in a moment to speak more about parking and traffic. So that's a bit of a primer, but he'll get into the details for you. Next slide, please. Here we zoom into the site plan and overlay the proposed building with the aerial image of the site. There will be a main entrance on the east side of the building, which is near the corner of the building that will have new landscaping. Visitors to the building will first encounter an entrance lobby before proceeding into the main gathering space. Next slide, please. Here's what the new building will look like. This shows where most people will enter on the east, but also shown are three separate entrances along the frontage of this slide that does allow the division of this building into three separate meeting rooms, A, B, and C, that can have their own separate entrances. The building will be able to host a variety of events at different times throughout the year. This will include 4H and FFA livestock shows, vendor areas, a concert or show arena, and space for bazaars and craft fairs. The space can also be used for animals and people to gather and remain safe in the event of an evacuation from future wildfires or other natural disasters. The building will have air conditioning to ensure that all animals and people who are in the building will remain comfortable and, most importantly, safe. Next slide, please. This is a repeat of the staff's presentation, but it is in the R1 zoning district, which is primarily single-family detached homes in Canby. And so the Clackamas County Fairgrounds is a conditional use as a major public facility. To the south are properties zoned light industrial. You'll see those in blue as well as high-density residential shown in orange. And the remaining adjacent properties are also zoned R1 low-density residential. Next slide, please. Regarding the conditional use for this major public facility, this building does comply with the conditional use criteria as mentioned in the staff report and in staff's presentation this evening. This is what the building looks like from the northwest side. There are direct access doors with bay, there are direct access bay doors. Doors one, two, and three face the Rosebrook Covered Arena to the north of the building. The building height here is thirty-four feet, ten inches, which is under the thirty-five foot height requirement of the zone, is only two feet taller than the Eli Arena and an about a foot shorter than the main pavilion. The applicant has met all of the conditional use standards in the Canby Planning and Zoning Code as noted by staff in their staff report. Next slide, please. The other applicable application here is the site design review. The, to meet the requirements, the requirement is to provide sixty percent of the menu points, and this application provides sixty point four percent overall points. So it does comply with the site development menu as well as a ten percent required for low-impact development. And here we have eighteen point eight percent. And this is things like landscape plant species, stormwater facilities, rain gardens, and other features that ease the development of impact on the site. So for these reasons, we are appreciative of staff's finding that the site and design review criteria are met as proposed. Next slide, please. And again, this is where staff provided the revised conditions of approval that we did discuss at the end of last week. There are twenty-six conditions being proposed by your staff, and we believe they are fair and applicable to this site, but we do support the three changes that were noted by staff. Just for clarification, we want to ensure that we are fully complying with Canby Fire Department standards, that we're following the tree preservation standards of the code, and that we're clearly and easily complying with all conditions. So we wanted to make sure with the parking monitoring report, everyone was on the same page about what that meant. At this time, I'd like to invite Phil Worth from Kittleson Associates to join me to discuss parking and transportation.
Thank you, Heather. My name is Philip Worth. I'm with the firm Kittleson and Associates. We have an office at 851 Southwest Sixth Avenue in downtown Portland, 97204. Next slide, please. Again, just a quick aerial view of the site. The red circle is around the development site, trying to set you up with a perspective on the traffic and parking analysis that was provided. Next slide. What we're highlighting here is the larger site, really putting it in the context of the four study intersections that we were required to analyze, two on Ivy, one at Third, the others at Highway 99, the other two on Pine at Fourth, and then again at Highway 99. Under all of the conditions that we were required to study, we found those four intersections to operate acceptably. That's under existing conditions, under conditions when events are occurring at the fairgrounds, and then under what was deemed a maximum event for the purpose of the study that included full occupancy of this building. So under all of those circumstances, on a typical Friday evening and a typical Saturday evening, we found the system to operate acceptably. Those are the key findings from the traffic impact analysis. Next slide, please. This slide highlights for you the locations of the major parking areas that serve the fairgrounds. Heather referenced the blue and red lots to the south of the main entrance. You see to the west, the large yellow lot that's often used during the annual fair that occurs there, and then occasionally to the, to the right or to the east, the orange lot, and ultimately the last one on the north side. This represents twenty-five hundred and twenty-five parking stalls, and demand for that amount of parking has not occurred, but the closest we get to that is during those annual fair events. During a maximum event in this building, we find that the parking located in the red and blue lots, which is approximately a thousand and twenty-five spaces, is more than adequate to accommodate the peak demand that would occur at this building. And in fact, we did a special study to address the parking concerns where we measured demand in the building during a concert event that was nearly twenty-three hundred participants in the building or on the site, I'll say, and then measured the parking demand in the red and blue lot. That demand of approximately twenty-three hundred patrons on the site nowhere near accommod, or nowhere near resulted in a full occupancy of the parking in the red and blue lots. So suffice it to say, there's more than adequate parking on the site to accommodate full demand of the parking facility. Nonetheless, we went through the process of estimating the effect of that seventeen and a half percent increase from twenty-three hundred to nearly twenty-seven hundred patrons in the building, and again, found that there was more than adequate parking supply as well as those study intersections, even under that hypothetical maximum event, still operated acceptably. So in all circumstances, the system, transportation system works acceptably, and the parking supply is more than adequate.
Next slide, please.
Thank you. This is simply to demonstrate for you the network of facilities that are available for access to the site via the pedestrian mode. So that bright yellow line represents pedestrian routes and the facilities that are on-street to accommodate them. So the entire south frontage and the western area frontage has pedestrian access for the, for the facility. In addition, you see the blue line, which represents the on-street striped bike lanes that are along the frontage of the site. This is important because we're always striving to accommodate other modes of transportation, providing access so that people have choices, in this case, how to get to the fairgrounds and to this new feature of the event center. Next slide.
And that is all we have prepared for you this evening. We'd like to thank staff again for their recommendation of approval and their staff report, and we fully support the proposed conditions of approval with the three small modifications noted previously. Thank you again for your time this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you both very much. Great presentation. I'm going to open it up to the planning commission body for questions. Let's start with Commissioner Jeroche. Do you have any comments or questions at this time?
I do have a couple. Thank you again for your great presentations, both from the staff and from consultants and architects. Much appreciated. I was wondering, I didn't see a reference in either the staff report or in any of the other presentations about the reconnaissance level survey that exists for the fairgrounds and if those were used as part of the research.
Commissioner Jeroche, are you speaking to the historical, the historical part of that, is that, just to clarify?
Well, just in general, the whole reconnaissance level survey that was contracted by the city for the fairgrounds, if that was reviewed.
Judy, I'm not sure exactly the study you're referring to. There was a 2018, or sorry, I don't know the correct year, but there was a, there was a, what was called a phase one master plan, from what I've seen. That was high level. That was not a land-use master plan, but was kind of a site master planning, the phase one of it, which was not included in the application. I took a look at it and didn't see anything that felt like it needed to be brought in to the report.
Right. Thank you, Emma, but that's not what I'm referring to. This is a study that the city contracted for. It was completed in 2020. This is a study that the city contracted for, it was completed in 2021. The city does this on occasion, they're, they hire that out to consultants who do very comprehensive studies of certain areas, and the intent is that then those studies are reviewed when development may occur in the areas that are, that are included in the study. And so it was from 2021, it was contracted by the city with consultants who performed very detailed work on the, you know, all of the, it's kind of an inventory, if you will, with very detailed information on the site, and that detailed information all goes to, also goes to the state and is entered in a state database. So I think we're talking about two different things, but it doesn't sound like that was reviewed, if I understand that correctly.
Commissioner Jeroche, I believe you're correct. The one clarification I'd just like to make is I believe that these were all temporary structures, tents in particular, that were removed. So I don't believe there were any buildings that are proposed to be removed that, other than the barn that got removed in 2014. Does that help at all?
I did notice, I agree with you, Don, it's tents and yeah, great, but I thought I saw mention of another little, some sort of a structure that was attached to one of the tents. It wasn't a tent, it was like an office or something, and I just didn't know what that was. But, but I agree with the, sort of the spirit of what you're saying, but really, the reconnaissance level survey part of it is to make sure that we're thinking about, you know, the impact within the existing complex beyond just a specific building or tearing down a specific building, it's really about preservation. And just, that's why those surveys are performed. So maybe we have a little different idea about what the value of that, why the city contracts to have those done. They're not cheap, by the way. So, but yeah, there's some other little building, if somebody could help me with that besides the tents, which makes perfect sense to me.
I think we'll turn that over to the architect, Commissioner Jeroche, on the structure of it, because I'm not sure what that is.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a member of my team to please.
It may not be important, but it is something besides the tents, it was some other little structure. And I was looking to see if there was a picture of it, I looked myself to see if I could figure it out, but I couldn't.
Yeah, thank you for the, for the question. So during the times when we operate the county fair, we hire a mobile office. We bring in a mobile office that sits adjacent to the tents.
Okay.
Yeah, that comes in for a month and then goes away.
Okay. So it was listed in the report as being removed, I guess, which is fine. Thank you for that clarification. Then I had one other question about the traffic impact analysis, and for those of us who lived here a while, we understand the impact of big events, and that's, you know, it's just comes with the program, I guess. But one thing I'm always curious about, especially last year, there were two events that, for some reason, backed up the traffic on Highway 99 very significantly, that became a safety issue. And it seemed like the, the challenge occurred in how many people can turn left in the left turn lane signal from 99 to Fourth. And so I don't know how the, the studies of the intersections take that into account, that, you know, how many cars can go through the green light, and how often does that back up the traffic? And it was pretty bad. It was, it's funny, sometimes I think the traffic study folks should look at the Canby Now Facebook page, because if you want to know there's a traffic problem in Canby, that's where you'll see it. And there were a lot of people very concerned about two events that, that caused that to happen. So I guess my question is, how do we affect, how do we study the impact of these signaling, the timings of signals or something?
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a great question, especially because you can anchor it in direct experience. I wish I knew exactly which event it was and when it occurred, but in the context of the way we did our analysis, again, we first identified, what are the peak two days, a weekday and a weekend? What are those two peak days in a week when your traffic is, generally speaking, the worst during the peak hours? That turned out to be a Friday evening and then a Saturday evening. So that was the study timeframe chosen. And with respect to your question, how, how were things operating, and especially, how, how well is the storage that we provide for turning vehicles accommodating those queues? So in short, and I know exactly what you're talking about, that left turn from the highway to, to Fourth, we looked at the length of that painted storage area for that left turn pocket, and we analyzed our maximum event at, at this proposed building. And we found that that striped storage is adequate during that Friday evening peak hour and that Saturday. Peak hour with this maximum event occurring. So your question, how, how did this happen in whatever event that you were observing? But the conditions that we studied showed that that striping and that available amount of storage for that left turn lane is adequate to accommodate what we call the 95th percentile queue, or 95 times out of 100, the queue would be accommodated by that storage area. And this, just to expand this, that same analysis was done for every movement at every intersection. So every left turn lane, every right turn lane, every through lane, the storage was measured, and then it was compared against the length of the queue that we might generate. And in all cases, there's more than adequate storage to accommodate it.
Yeah, it seems like it's a combination of how many people can turn left at a signal there, and how many people can pay their parking, whatever, charge and get in. And the combination of those two things became quite problematic. So I'm assuming there's some math somewhere that shows, you know, so many people can turn left in 30 minutes, and, you know, if there's 1,000 cars trying to turn left and get into the parking lot and pay their parking fee, does the math add up? So I guess I've got some homework to look at that, because it was a big problem last year twice. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Jeroche. Commissioner Driscoll.
Hi, guys. My question, first one, is about the catastrophic events that you referenced. I know one of those is for potential wildfires. Does this HVAC system have the ability to turn off the air and filter at a particularly high level to protect any animals or people inside that would make it more suitable than others?
That's a great question. I might ask our architect, or Brian Crowe, to come on up.
Brian Crowe, again. So the, the design proposed here does not include air scrubbers, but I was able to, through a grant with the state of Oregon this last summer, acquire two very large air scrubbers that can be deployed within that building to clean the air.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
I was looking back at Judy, sorry, Jennifer.
And so is that something that we would be able to count on being installed and available, or is that kind of a special circumstance situation?
So the nice things, nice thing about them is they're portable. So if we have, we have use for them in our main pavilion, we could put them in there.
So they'd be on-site, nearby, but not necessarily always attached to that building?
They're big.
Yeah, I was gonna say, does it take a kind of a, a special level of expertise to install them?
Just plug it in the wall.
Just plug them in, love it.
Flip the switch and they work.
Okay. So a different kind of catastrophic event. What's the seismic rating on these buildings? Are they supposed to be particularly adept for that kind of circumstance?
I believe it's a Type 3, am I accurate?
What does a Type 3 cover?
It'll still, from, it'll be the architect who commands this, but from what I understand, the Type 3 will still remain standing in a seismic event. If we, if it was a Type 4, it would still be occupiable.
Okay, so standing in a Type 3 is up to a certain level of earthquake?
Gosh, that takes someone who's way smarter than me to know that.
I'm just kidding. Okay. So basically, we can expect it's not going to collapse on anybody, but it might not be safe to be in.
Correct, that's correct. Yeah, the, the Level 3 seismic has to do with, like Mr. Crowe was saying, that the, the structure is able to be, able to stand up and not necessarily be occupied. It's, along the Level 4s would be more like a hospital facility. So this is, this is not a critical facility per se, but for that purpose, it will serve, it will serve that purpose.
Okay. The other question that I had takes a different direction, kind of back over to, not exactly traffic, but just encouraging the bicycle route as a way to go in. I believe I saw that there were two bicycle stalls in the, in the report?
There's actually three bicycle racks.
Three racks?
Yes.
Okay, so each rack would, you know, allow for a number of bikes? So we could, six? So we'd be looking at about 18? Okay. I was just curious. It's like, if we can have up to, say, nearly 300 people for an event, 3,000 people for an event, it seems like we might want to be a little more generous with that. And that was just an observation. That's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Llewellyn?
I guess for me, it's, you know, I think these fairgrounds are a unique situation in the city of Canby. It's kind of their parachute, so to speak. It's, was this, when looking at this building, did we look at this at 30,000 feet and think about the future of what those fairgrounds could be? And I'm really thinking about this in terms of the, I'm concerned about the transportation component, kind of what Judy was going. And maybe it begs the question, we really need to get back to our transportation system, but I think these fairgrounds offer a lot of potential for the city of Canby for future growth, and it could bring in bigger events that could also help the downtown revitalize much better than it has in the past. So my concern would be, have we looked at this at 30,000 feet down the road as other buildings get remodeled, maybe replaced, that type of thing? Does that make sense?
2018, the Fair Board Concerned Citizens all came together to develop a master plan for the site. And so that's really the, the North Star for everything we're doing. We do realize we're landlocked, so if we're, we can't grow the number of people that come to Fair, just because of the limited parking. You know, we did 103,000 people last year, came down for Fair. So the only place to go is up. So if, if we want more parking, we're gonna have to build a parking garage. But that master plan really is the North Star that we refer to when we're continuing to develop the property. And with the changing habits of people and the changing environment, it's a living document. So it's something that, you know, we're gonna revisit here again in a couple of years, most likely, and take another look at, you know, where, where the world is, what, how people react to events. So the other, the other side of that is, so our maximum event, the Fair, will probably won't get much bigger than what we are right now, self-regulating. But the frequency at which we do other events can, especially with the development of this building, will, can increase. I think the great thing about it, it's, it's our one climate-controlled building. And during the winter, there's not really a place to go on our campus that we can house 2,000 people for an event out of the elements. So that's where this, I think, helping with the growth of tourism within Canby, agrotourism, and better serving the citizens of our area, this building is, is a linchpin in that process.
I guess, Don, is, it would be good to see that master, it'd be kind of nice to see the master coming down the road.
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be happy to share it, and we did take a look at that as part of the application process. I do want to just echo what Brian's saying, I think there, this event center will be something as an impetus, we believe, as well as for things like a new hotel, which I think is badly needed in Canby. These are the kinds of things that start to make a difference in that, those synergies there. But be happy to share the link with you on the 2018 master plan. That was something that was done by the fairgrounds, it was not something that was routed through planning, but they do have a working document, as Brian is saying, that they're using.
It'd be kind of nice to maybe have a discussion on that down the road. And I, I'm a big, I think it's ripe for a convention center hotel right there. I think it's a dynamite thing for Canby, it's very unique, and I think that's how we get downtown revitalized personally. It's gonna take tourism, still a bedroom community to Portland. So I appreciate this.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Back to Judy's point, I think the two events, if I'm not mistaken, because I got caught in that traffic, one had to do with a dog show of some shore, some sort, and it was like a mad dash to get in before showtime, and it was actually both directions, east and west, it was lined all the way up 99, heading east, and it was back through town, coming from the west and to, into it, for what it's worth. And I think the other one may have been Hair Fest, I can't be 100% sure on that, but I don't know what the options are for us to have, like what Clark County Fairgrounds does, where they bring in state and county to direct people onto the freeway and get them the heck out of there. They kind of changed some directions on the road just to maximize efficiency, but I did get caught in that one, and that was a son of a gun getting through, but it was all good, it all worked out by noon. Great presentation.
It was more likely the Renaissance Fair.
Ooh.
And so there were three weekends.
Might have been.
7,000 people on Friday and 7,000 people on Saturday.
Yeah.
Funny, I was thinking it was the Christmas light thing, but I don't.
I wish it was the Christmas light thing.
Is that the one where they hit capacity and people had traveled from out of town and couldn't get in?
That was two summers ago. Yeah, that was right after I started here. So one of the things I implemented after that debacle was a couple of policies that if your event's over 3,000 people, you'll provide me a traffic management plan that I have to approve. Additionally, we don't allow people to sell events like the Renaissance Fair, I require them to sell a limited number, number of tickets per day, and not sell a ticket that you could come any of the three weekends. Because when it rained the first two weekends, everybody wanted to come the third.
Thank you for that, and I really appreciate the information and the thought that went into the presentation. Nothing from me. Commissioner Newworth, do you have anything to add?
So I think that what is going to apply here more than anything else is build it and they will come. I think it's a great idea. But I really, really think that somehow you guys are gonna have to expand and not just say we have enough parking, because people don't want to pay for parking. And so people park in the neighborhoods, they park in Malar tires parking lot, they park in, what is it, Rite Aid parking lot, they park wherever they can do to not pay that, whatever it is, $3, $5, $10. I don't know what it is, but they don't. Now, I'll, I'll, I'll be the devil advocate here, during the fair, I park on the other side of the fairgrounds, okay, in the neighborhoods, just to stay out of the traffic. It's not that I don't want to pay it, it's just that I don't want to deal with the traffic. And so I was a little disappointed in this plan, that it didn't stretch out and say anything about reaching out to state police, county police, and getting them out there on 99. We've had fatalities. The other thing that wasn't even discussed in this was the train. The train stops things in Canby, brings it to a screeching halt, and we've got, we had, was it two years ago that we had a young person killed by the train? Trying to get across quickly. Now I realize that that's not your, within your purview to do that, but it kind of is too. And you're, you're a county thing, and you're in Canby. And so it's the Canby people that are sitting in the traffic, it's the Canby people who are getting their kids run over on the train. And so I was a little disappointed that we didn't stretch this thing out and say, we actually do see a problem, we want to build this building, we want to bring more people in, that's all great, it helps our economy and everything else, but again, I go back to our livability, and I realize that it's only the Fair, Hair Fest, Renaissance, but you build a building like this, and places like this are few and far between in Clackamas County, and people are gonna want to come here, which is great, spend your money, go home, that's wonderful, but we gotta keep everybody safe. So I was a little disappointed, actually, I was more than a little disappointed that this didn't give some kind of a plan, that we didn't do just the bare minimum, okay, as far as traffic was concerned, as to what actually is going on when you bring that many people in all at one time. And we didn't discuss the train, neighborhoods, the fact that people don't like to park and so on and so forth. So I, I love the project, I, it's great. It really is crummy that the fairgrounds happens to be located where it's at, because you are landlocked, you're right next to railroad tracks, all the above. And you may have enough parking to handle the events that you plan on having. But we also have to kind of stretch ourselves just a little bit out of the box and get to what, what do people do? People don't want to pay to park, so they are running across ninety-nine, running the red lights and so on and so forth. So I would have loved to have seen some kind of a program that you guys have thought out to mitigate this dangerous situation that we've got going on. And I didn't, I didn't see that in this. So that's, love the building, it's all great. Would have been nice to maybe see the building not be quite so utilitarian and maybe fit a little bit more of the nineteen-hundred Fair that we have had here for so long. And the buildings that this is taking their place. But that's not necessarily a key thing, it just would have been cool. But I think keeping people safe is the biggest drawback to this project. And it, it's a big one. And I, I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, I can put it into words strong enough to say it would have been great to see something just a little bit more expansive, to see what, you know, to really what this is affecting all around it. So that's my comment. Oh, and the other thing I want to ask too, is, is there a generator, that's a standby generator? Does this thing have power? If, if we're going to use this for emergency events?
Photovoltaic array on top. And then there's an exterior generator port.
Okay.
We decided, just, part of the reason it's so utilitarian is just the cost. Let's get something that we can afford, because we can't afford much more than we're paying for it.
Sure.
So there is an external generator port with a hot switch. And with United Rentals being just on the other side of town, we could have a seventy watt, seventy-five KVA generator down here plugged in with a matter, within a matter of hours.
Okay. Other than that, that's about all I've got. I, I've just, it would have been really great if we would have figured some kind of a thing around the train and with the, with the whole traffic and the safety thing, because there's a safety issue here that's just not, in my opinion, is just not being addressed.
I appreciate that, what I would say to that is, the intent of the study was not a, an all-encompassing study for year-round operations of the fairgrounds as a, as a whole. But it was intend, intended to measure the traffic impact for the approval, the conditional approval of this building at a maximum event for that, for that structure itself. And I think it sufficiently, sufficiently answered that question. But, you know, traffic's a problem. I, I, I won't disagree with you at all. And I'm, I'm working with our clients, like the Renaissance Fair, like the Hair Fest, like True West, to develop, develop traffic and parking plans that expedite entry. And I don't know if you've noticed at Fair this year, but we introduced an, an instantaneous payment method with credit card or cash, and the whole process, even if you use a credit card, took less than ten seconds. And that really got a lot of the traffic off Fourth Avenue for Fair, really did. And technology's advancing, and we're, we're trying to be smarter at what we do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Hello. So these air handlers are fairly standard in that they have filtration in them, and the scrubbers that you were talking about are augmentative. Okay, I have a lot of experience with those, and so that's, I was pretty sure that was the case. Along with that, modern models are quite quiet, staff will be happy to know. I know you checked that, but I'm fairly sure that any road that you check that sound level from will be louder than air handlers themselves. Don, did you not say at one point that Pine Street is at or over capacity as an intersection that the state is looking at it as something to improve in the future?
It's close. I think just maybe to reemphasize Phil's points, this was reviewed by ODOT. It was reviewed by DKS Consulting Firm that City uses. ODOT took a look at it as well. We did not treat this lightly, and I think Phil would acknowledge that. They went through a pretty rigorous process to determine turning movements, et cetera, and it is not failing. And ODOT agrees with that as well. So I think the, the critical thing, I think, here is that, to Dan's point, which is, I think, you know, that's, I get the safety globally issue. The exacerbation of the conditions out there was our baseline, that they could not exacerbate the, the conditions, parking or traffic. And I believe Kittleson proved out in their studies that that is, that in fact was the case, and ODOT concurred with that.
Well, I, I agree completely as well. I was just floating with the point that at some point, I think things are going to improve there. I mean, I don't think that that intersection is going to stand the test of time, even independent of this building. And I appreciate the fact that when the building is built and the Fair is going, it's gonna be mostly filled with animals as opposed to people, so it won't be running at, at full capacity then. And I think that mainly what we're talking about here is, is a concert site in the middle of winter with vendors and such is probably gonna be the biggest kind of traffic issue that we have there. And I fully expect that if there's a car accident or some other snafu like that is really going to be the mitigating, for the, you know, factors as far as getting to the venue and getting out of the venue and as far as jamming up the area. So I just wanted to kind of bring that point, that I think that the problems that we have with that intersection, those problems days are numbered to a degree.
And I would not disagree. In fact, there's a study, and this was not reflected in the applicant's materials because they're unaware of this, but there's a study to try to alleviate that junction where Fourth and Pine connect. And yet that weary intersection there, right before the railroad tracks, that's being studied to provide some sort of alternative relief there. Timing, et cetera, is unknown, but that is being looked at.
And one other issue I noticed, there was a mural referred to four different places in the application. Where is that?
So the intent is to put it on the Fourth Street side of Horning Hall as a representation of the past, present, and future of the Clackamas County Fairgrounds.
So maybe not so white, but not right away, but something other than that? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ellison?
I had a few questions, and they've all been addressed, so I'm good.
Okay, then, in keeping with the format, we've got three minutes for proponents. Do we have any proponents other than the presenters that would like to speak about this project? Seeing none in person or online? How about opponents? Do we have any opponents of the project? None in person or online, which I would say we don't need a rebuttal then, so we can move right into the closing of the public hearing, or the portion of the hearing. And we will now deliberate amongst ourselves and, and talk about this, this project. So any thoughts, Commissioner Driscoll? Anything you want to discuss about the project?
No, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, Commissioner Lawelling?
It just kind of goes back to my original thought. I guess, kind of along with Dan was saying, is at thirty thousand feet, I would like to see more addressed on the transportation issue of this. Because I think we do have some issues out there, and this is going to only grow.
One thing I can say about the transportation situation, having worked with Public Works on the Traffic Safety Commission and knowing what they're going to be doing with the work on ninety-nine. ODOT and the county know that we've got major timing issues with those left-hand turn signals. And the, we anticipate that that will be reviewed and fixed at the point where all of the work on ninety-nine is done. It'll probably continue to be a mess until all of that's done. But there are a lot of people who have eyes on it that hopefully will lead to a better outcome after the construction's complete.
Thank you. Commissioner Jaroche, anything before we start talking about motions?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Ewer? Commissioner Hutchinson, anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
Commissioner Ellison?
Not at this time.
Okay, so at this time, I think I will entertain a motion for Clackamas County Fairground Multipurpose Building, DR twenty-three oh three, CUP twenty-three oh one.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry, give us a sec here.
I just, I think you need to add in the motion with the revised conditions identified in the.
Yeah, in the presentation, what you saw on the PowerPoint, yeah, those.
Yeah, yeah, CO one, CO two, three, and seven? CO two, three, and seven? Okay, so I will entertain a motion for Clackamas County Fairgrounds Multipurpose Building, DR twenty-three oh three, CUP twenty-three oh one, CO one, I'm sorry, two, three, and seven.
So moved.
You took the easy one.
I seconded.
Second, all right, very well. So we will take roll call vote, we'll start with Commissioner Jaroche.
Aye.
Commissioner Driscoll?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawelling?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Ewer?
Aye.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
The ayes have it, six to one. The project, Clackamas County Fairgrounds Multipurpose Building, DR twenty-three oh three, CUP twenty-three zero one, and CO two, three, and seven, approved as presented. Thank you. Okay.
Chair Ellison, can we, I think folks are probably gonna largely leave here unless they were interested in my report. Can we give them a sec to?
Couple minute break?
Yeah, yeah, let's take a.
All right, we will take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
I know.
Hello?
Just a presentation.
I was trying to do some damage control out here. They were getting a little fired up, and I'm like, calm down, it's all right. Typical questions, just, it'll be all right.
So, the only area that we are switching our water supply to Malala?
That's the hole.
Or is it, so it's not, it's not conceptual?
I'd say it's further along the conceptual. Like there, in, within the next ten years, a new water treatment has to be, the new water treatment plant has to be built. Malala does not have the capacity that the city will need long term. And so we will need to pull from the water river. And how it's gonna kind of work is, the city, Camp Utility is allowed to pull a certain amount of water from the water river. But they also have a permit to pull a certain amount of water from Malala. What you can actually do is combine it. So the usage from Malala can actually also be combined with usage out of the planet, pull, even pull out. However that works out. But it's, unfortunately, the facility is going to be like.
What is it?
It's like sixty million dollars for some very large sum of money. And so probably within the next two or three years, Camp Utility is going to have to go out for mod. Because they'll get some, they have some cash in hand, they will get some, some money from various areas, some loans. But eventually they'll have to be a mod to, to fund the rest. And it will go, at this point in time, it's gonna be moved out there by the, by the city, by the current city parks. No, actually, they're gonna have to cut down some of Eco Park for that. Because that's, the Dog Park area is actually for poop settling ponds, so. Yeah, so when they have, the sewer has to be thinned out a little bit more, they will build ponds out there and poop out in there.
So the, the municipal facilities for water out in Wilsonville are really cool.
Oh, yeah, I took a tour of their facility.
Yeah. We've, we've done photos out there. If we could keep that sort of thing in mind when it comes to building our stuff, no one will care what it is.
So what it is, is the same company that runs our water treatment plant, run, they will be built. They will be built almost like. The water treatment plant.
Oh, sorry, water treatment plant.
Oh, same difference, same difference.
San Diego, they've attached them together. Okay, we're going live in five, four, three, two, and one. Okay, items of interest. The next Planning Commission meeting is planned for Monday, January twenty-second at six P M. And we also have a Planning Director's Update. Don, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. Just a few updates for the next hearing on January twenty-second. We do have another hearing item. It's a multifamily development. Tivoli Commons, Jason Bristol's project is on the twenty-second, a local developer in town. I have a few other things, and some of these, you'll have to bear with me. I'm hoping we will stay with the schedule, but there's kind of some evolving discussions we're having with Department of Land Conservation and Development as well on a few of these. But I'm hoping that we would have a retouch on housing efficiency measures on February twelfth, which would be again focusing a little bit more on what the current code allows. I think I kind of skipped that step, which I don't think was helpful in understanding our code. And I am gonna repeat over that to get people up to speed, like what, what does it allow now? What might be allowed? I'm not sure if there's a real clear understanding of what our current code allows versus what it doesn't. So that'd be February, February twelfth. February, February twenty-six, I'm hoping we have a hearing on housing needs analysis and housing production strategy. Again, that's the one, we're getting some more input from Department of Land Conservation and Development on that. And then the next hearing would be March eleventh, which would be another housing efficiency measure discussion. That would be with our consultants again for that. More near term, and I really would highly encourage you all to attend January twenty-fourth, six P M, our next Community Summit, Baker Prairie School, January twenty-fourth, six P M. That last summit was extremely well-attended, we needed a bigger facility. And I really would appreciate if you, you guys can all put that on your calendars to attend that. That's Community Summit number three. We're doing that because some people left because they couldn't, there wasn't enough room in the police station. So this is another opportunity for that. Following that, we'll have a Project Advisory Committee meeting somewhere probably in the first or second week of March. Then we'll have another listening session with the property owners in the steady area that are outside the current urban growth boundary, that will probably be in March as well. Those have not been scheduled yet. Lots going on on a number of fronts. That's probably enough for tonight, I could go into other information, but that's. That's probably enough for tonight. I could go into other information, but that's, I think, probably enough. If there's questions, happy to answer.
I'll be out for the January 26th. I'll be in another country.
Okay.
So my trustee vice chair will have command of the dais for that evening. So, thank you. And then, you know, there was some talk about that master plan for the fairgrounds. I just really, I think everybody feels the same way that we'd all like to have access to that sooner than later. And if it could be emailed out to all of us, that would be phenomenal.
Yeah, there's a link, actually. It's pretty easy. I can't send you the entire document. It's huge, but I can send you the link.
And I'd like to see a discussion during this whole process of looking at the conference of land use plan. I'd love to see a discussion on that master plan, how that would fit in the entire thing. Really, it's a part of this whole thing.
And if someone might be able to identify the plan or the, the research effort that Judy brought up?
Oh, yeah.
It'd be nice to find. And I need to get more, and I may follow up with Commissioner Jeroche on that, but yeah, that's, that's an important item.
That could be part of the same discussion.
Yeah, that'd be easy. The reconnaissance level survey, it's also huge, but I'm sure there's a link somewhere. I'll find it.
Okay, thank you, G. Thank you, Commissioner Jeroche.
Welcome.
Just, just on that note, anytime, because I'm, over the meetings and work sessions, various people have asked for various things. And it might be somewhat considered annoying, but I would love to be, if it was sent to all of us, anytime anybody requests anything, for example, the master plan, just as a blanket statement to send it to all of us, so we're all looking at the same information. That would be great, because I can't, now I can't remember, but there's been a couple of times where various commissioners have requested things and I was like, oh, I would have loved to see that as well.
No, and that's a really great point. I need to be in a better habit of doing that. That's how council's done as well. So absolutely, yeah. Yep, yep.
For the community summit on the 24th, where in the middle school is it? Is it going to be like?
I think it's going to be in the cafeteria. I will confirm that as well, but I'm, yeah. Commons, yeah. Thank you.
Do they have seating in the Commons area or is it a standing event?
They have seating. We will be investigating this. That was something that came up today. It's like, I want to make sure we have chairs, and I'm pretty sure they have chairs. Like, yeah, standing is not acceptable for 300 people or 200 people.
Is this going to be similar format to that last one where there's, everybody's doing those projects together?
We'll have mapping, and that's the other reason we want to go out there is to look at the table sizes. The maps actually fit the tables and it will be, I mean, it'll be a repeat for those people that have done it before, but I mean, to be honest with you, they'll be, I think it's good information. We'll have more of a presentation. Last time it was just kind of overwhelming, to be honest with you. I could not believe there were still people coming in at 6:15. And the room was full. I mean, it was just, it was kind of crazy.
You're always going to get different results with a different group of people too. So it'll be interesting to see what common themes prevail and what else gets brought up.
Yeah. And that's part of it. So I mean, we're trying to get the consensus and obviously with the folks that are in the study area that are outside the city, that's brought in a significant number. I mean, it's large. I mean, it's, and they, those folks talk to each other. And so they've obviously created a conversation around that.
Okay, any other items of interest or guidance from anybody about anything?
That's it. I'm happy to send on the information though, as, and great point, as I get that, so that everybody has the same information.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Jeroche, anything from you at this point?
No, I mean, I'll send on the information about the reconnaissance level survey for the fairgrounds, but just a pitch about that. So the city over the years has contracted with historical consulting firms and done very detailed inventories, if you will, of different neighborhoods, partly so that when development occurs in those neighborhoods, we have an understanding of the impact because there, you know, there's a lot of things that make a city livable. Certainly, you know, we want these new big facilities and that's awesome, but you know, they also know that a lot of things that make cities livable is a bit of the heritage part of it and the traditions. And so you always want to understand just the impact. Not that that changes what we do necessarily, but that's part of what these studies do. And again, the city's been contracting for them. They're not cheap. They reside in Jamie Stickle's department, but I'll make sure that we all get the one for the fairgrounds. But there are multiple that exist for different areas in the city. And I think there's another one in the works right now. So follow up for me. I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
And no, I didn't want to pick on Emma because she obviously didn't know about it. So it's not her fault it didn't show up in her report, so.
Anybody have anything else? If not, I guess we can entertain a motion to close.
I move that we close the meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That will do it. Thank you, Canby. Good night.
Well, no, this is the first time in like four months I've actually been in town on one of your meetings and been free to come to it, so.